Sorry, can everybody hear us now?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Would one of the ATAX committee members like or Randy like to introduce all of us? The members of the committee?
I'll go ahead and let everybody introduce themselves. I'm Randy Buck, Chair of the ATAX Committee.
I'm Susan Blackett, I'm Vice Chair of the ATAX Committee. Joanne Fagan.
Stuart Spiezzak.
And I think Joe's in the. I believe that's everyone's there today so far.
All right, thank you, Randy. Now we'll call on Laurie Smith of Explore Charleston to introduce her associates and proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. I'm Laurie Smith. We're so happy to be here today. I'm the Chief Operating Officer with Explore Charleston. And I have with me today Annie McEwen, who is in our membership of Publications Department. Chisholm Seabrook, who is our Assistant Director of Marketing. And Chris Campbell, who heads up our Communications and Strategies to make sure that y'all get these materials as well. Can y'all hear me okay? So, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us some time to be with you all today. We're happy to be here and come on to the island. Don't you all need an office out here? Don't you need an office out here? I would love if we could, we could make that happen. But anyway, I just want to tell you that driving out here, it occurred to me that the team that we have together working on Seabrook, working on today's presentation. We are, we're not just your marketing arm, we are also your neighbors. All of us were born and raised in Charleston area, different parts of town, I would say. But Annie grew up downtown, Chisholm on John's Island, Chris in Mount Pleasant, and I grew up in Somerville. And we won't talk about the score of the game on Friday night, I wonder which is going to go because, anyway. But, but we're all from this area and we all feel really honored to be able to, to serve our community where we grew up. And actually, we're being able to not just, to continue to be here in both the area, but to raise our own families here. And that's just a real gift. So, we're your neighbors and we care about this community. So, thank you for having us today. What brought us here today is that the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee has undergone some, well, it really has had a reinterpretation of the rules for the accommodations tax. And we are now required to present you all with a budget for your approval that, that will then be carried over to Turk. So, we want to help to get through some of these items that really need to be, boxes that need to be checked. But we also want to give you some meaningful information. Today, there are a couple of items that were in your agenda packet ahead of time, and that is last year's budget. It was the first time that we made an attempt at trying to meet the new regulations for Turk. So, it's a, it's a shorter list. What you also have in your packet is this year's budget, and it looks like this. It's a spreadsheet with green on the front. This is what we're proposing that Catherine will submit to Turk. So, we'll be looking at that today. And also in your packet, you have a lot of information. You have a copy of today's presentation in your packet. You also have our quarterly update that, that comes to you all at Seabrook Island that's specific to your local government, as well as our tourism economic impacts. That's really our scorecard for the year. You also have our Visitors Guide, as well as our Golf Guide. And these are our response pieces to folks that inquire about our area. So, that's what we have with you today. We'll plan on giving you, I'm going to give you an overview of who our, what our organization is and how we do what we do. Talk a little bit about our relationship, our initiatives, and then allow some time for questions and answers, should there be. In a nutshell, the mission of Explore Charleston is to unify and lead the travel industry. Our job is to stimulate overnight visitation. We know that if we can get people to spend the night, that's where the accommodations tax dollars begin. From there, folks will dine out, they will enjoy recreation in our area, and they'll go shopping. But we have to get them here first to spend the night. Explore Charleston is a true regional organization. We are a 501(c)(6) organization in the eyes of the IRS. We serve 10 local municipal governments. We have 818 members. We're overseen by a 27-member Board of Governors, and Mayor Greg represents you all on our Board of Governors. We have 53 full-time employees. We're on a fiscal year that runs July 1st to June 30th. Our budget this current fiscal year is $24.2 million. And we also perform an external audit annually, as well as, of course, general tax returns, the 990 and UBIT 990. So, I mentioned that we're a regional organization. What you see here is an overview of our budget, which is essentially split into thirds. About a third of our budget comes to us in the form of accommodations tax. And many entities that do what we do are fully funded this way, through public funds, through accommodations tax. However, our local hospitality leaves the destination marketing enough to contribute another 38% to our budget to help with those efforts. And those are members and advertisers that choose to be a part of destination, marketing the destination of this community. And then we also receive a grant from the state of South Carolina. South Carolina believes in tourism as well. About 29, another 29% of our budget comes to us through the state of South Carolina through the grant. And this is really, it provides for us tremendous buying power that we have public monies and non-public monies coming together to, to do what we do. So, today, we're talking about accommodations tax, particularly the very first line up, the 2% state accommodations tax. There are other taxes that are tourism taxes, but here, we're talking about 2% state accommodations tax. And the way that travels through. The way that that travels after collections are made is that the first 25,000 stays with the government where the tax was collected. Another 5% goes to the general fund of that municipal government. 65% is directed towards accommodations tax eligible expenditures in that government. And then 30% goes towards marketing and promotion through your destination management and marketing organization. And we have been honored to have been that representative for you all for many years. I'm giving you an overview of where our revenues come from. I want to turn now to expense because that's really why we're here, how we spend money that we receive. So, this is a quick overview. At 30,000 feet, you can see that 40, 45% of our, all of our expenditures are expenditures that are eligible for accommodations tax expenditures. Spend another 30% through the grant and another 24%, 25% through member and industry expenditures. And those are items where you may hear or read a lot about air service to our community. We are very involved with recruitment and retention of air service initiatives, with workforce initiatives and items like that. And I won't dive into that stuff today. If you have questions about it, I'm certainly happy to answer. But we're here to focus on that 45% where we spend our money as it relates to accommodations tax. So, that's 30,000 feet. This is 10,000 feet, and I'm just going to admit, this is a scary slide. I didn't know how to make this work any, any differently. But what I will say is if we're referencing this document, and this will be the report that, again, we're proposing go to the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee. This slide is summarizing the report that you have in front of you. So, all the details are here for you to read later on. But what we want to do is, is dive into that 44%. That equates to just under $11 million. You can see in the second column of accommodations tax expenditures. And we're going to go into each of the areas, marketing, media, group sales, visitor services, and visitor information support. And then what you see on the water right column is the amount that's attributable to Seabrook Island based on your share of accommodations tax. That's part of our overall income. But I'll note here is that we've got another $7.4 million that we're spending that is full-on marketing that we received from the state of South Carolina. And what's interesting is that the state only awards a grant to, to certain communities in the state. There are five communities right now that is eligible for those funds. And they will not award a grant within the same, two grants in the same community. So, they don't want there to be competing interests for, for those dollars. So, Explore Charleston is the recipient of the destination grant funds through the South Carolina Department of PRT. And that will mean $7.4 million in tourism expenditure promotion this year. Member and industry you see here at $6 million for a total of $24 million. We're going to focus today on the items in green, which total just under $11 million. So, let's start with destination marketing. We spend about $6.1 million in destination marketing that is accommodations tax eligible. We're attributing $75,000 of Seabrook tours these efforts. Now, we do have an in-house marketing team that creates, develops, does all the advise and implements all of our marketing strategies. We don't have a need for an outside agency. So, what this means is that our team can negotiate advice at an, at an ad agency rate. But it allows us to enjoy the significant economies of scale. Research is at the center of everything that we do. And research, as you probably know, is very expensive. But the advices that we make are even more expensive. So, we need to make sure that we're making smart, fine decisions. So, everything we do is, has research at the core. Enjoy a wonderful relationship with the College of Charleston. You see here Dr. Daniel Gritmata, who's actually speaking at our member meeting this afternoon. And we're the patients. And we also have many industry sources that we buy data from, Smith Travel, Travel Clip, Datafy, Key Data. These are all well-renowned, well-respected data sources in our industry. And it tells us who is interested in visiting our community, where are they coming from, and how much are they willing to spend? So, in your packet, you have two pieces that I mentioned that are referenced that really are scorecard. It's something that's generated through, that's this piece, is generated through the Office of Tourism Analysis at the College of Charleston. In this case, you have sent, so just as I mentioned, where are they spending their, they're coming from. We can read through those items later. It's very interesting information. And then also in the packet is the municipal quarterly report that is specific to Seabrook. And what we have here on this slide is a snapshot from that report. It's showing information looking backwards, how the area performed, which, by the way, very well, as our community has recovered from, from COVID. And it also provides a snapshot of all your current information. So, how on pace are we compared to prior years, and what do we need to be doing to stimulate demand to be at pace or beyond? So, our marketing strategy has a radar approach. We're in digital, we're in broadcast, social media. Print is still relevant. And this shows, shows you just a few of the titles that were in them. For fiscal year 22, 23, we recognize many of these titles, and we've actually added a few new ones this year that we want to try out. Including Kingdom, which focuses on high-end golfers in the New York. These are just a few examples of some of our creative, you know, it's very, very easy to present our community in a beautiful light because we're just very modern. But this gives you an idea of combining both island and city lifestyle. So, many of our websites are absolutely key to our strategy. There's nobody doing business now that doesn't have a website. ExploreCharleston.com focuses on our leisure visitors. CharlestonAreaBeaches.com allows us to take a deeper dive into each of our island communities. Each of the islands has a different personality, and we want to be able to, to show that off. MeetCharleston.com allows us to speak to planners and people who may want to bring group business to our community. And Charleston Area Wedding Guide is all about social. If a market ever seems to have sustainability, it's weddings. No matter what's going on with the economy, people are still getting married, still taking a honeymoon. Our streaming media is purchased through a group called Media Sinclair. And Media, sorry, it's Sinclair Media. Sinclair is the largest distributor of ads on streaming services in the country. Last year was our first year dipping our toe into this market, and we did well. We reached 42 markets in 32 states. Many of those markets are what we might call non-stop or fly markets. With a 97% completion rate, and I have to tell you, if you're ever on a streaming platform and you see an ad and you think, I thought that I got away from regular TV, so I didn't have to see ads. We're those folks that you can't forward through the ad, you have to watch the ad. So, I'd love to think that 97% completion rate is just because we're that great. But anyway, people are, they are watching the full ad because they have to. We had nine separate campaigns last year, and this gave us a sense of what we might be doing in this, in this platform. And we've got a lot more planned this year. So, it's a really exciting place for us to be. And I just wanted to show you an example. You know, water is part of the west of it. Whether you're fishing or boating, you've got so many things in your pockets.
There are so many spots to go, from beaches to the marsh. Nature is a big base point of life if you come here.
It's absolutely breathtaking.
In any season, you can find your paradise.
That's just an example of the kind of information that we have out there. And Chisholm and her team actually created beautiful work. I'm, I'm the number cruncher, this spreadsheet person. So, I can't take any credit for that. But anyway, just, it's really fun to be able to showcase our community in that way. Social media is, is robust for us, and it supports our larger marketing campaigns. And it really just helps to carry our message further, especially if something can, can get steam and then start to become more popular. We're also on top of Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We're now on YouTube, Pinterest, LinkedIn, and even TikTok, which there was a time we said, you're never going to be on TikTok. Well, guess what? Now I'm going to be on TikTok. So, anyway, this shows you just a few of some of the really nice posts from Seabrook Island about Seabrook Island. These are blogs and itineraries that had, that were recent that had some focus on Seabrook Island. And now we'll turn to our publications. These are the print pieces that you have in front of you. We've tagged a couple of the Seabrook pages. The leisure visitor guide and the more specific blog that we put out half a million, distributed about half a million of those a year, especially in our, in our good years. And these all tie back to our leisure site at ExploreCharleston.com. Destination Planning Guide, we didn't not write those today, but those are the, the books that match our Meet Charleston website. And we're continually investing in videography and photography, as I mentioned. Fortunately, we're a very easy-to-capture destination, but this is becoming ever more important with social media. Images and videos are absolutely essential to permission and helping people to connect. So, marketing, our paid efforts in the marketing department go on and on with our media department. And beginning on page two, once again, in the Turk Report, you'll see some details about what all has happened in our media department. So, if the marketing efforts are paid placements, media efforts are what we call earned media. What is earned media? Earned media is essentially coverage that we don't pay for. And it's particularly desirable because it's generally seen as a third-party endorsement. So, how do we get this earned media? We get it through relationship development. Our team works really hard to get to know travel writers and editors and journalists, not just in the country, but around the world. We do through various associations and societies, like the Society of American Travel Writers, the Public Relations Society of America, the National, sorry, the National Association of Black Journalists, and the British Guide of Travel Writers. So, it's a, it's a very intentional cultivation of relationships. We also maintain what we call a clipping service that allows us to see how we're performing, how many mentions we're getting. And that helps us to determine which writers and which editors can actually produce the most work for us. So, it's a way for us to, to determine ROI, where we, where we're going to spend our efforts. Because everybody would love to show up for, for a weekend in our community and write about us. So, this is a way to help us be able to know who to, who to be working with. Last fiscal year, we had 129 media visits. The total media exposure was half of, what is that, half a billion dollars, 500 million? And, you know, we could never afford to pay for that, but that was the exposure that we received. Total circulation was 266 billion. This is more people than there are on the planet. I'll acknowledge that. But anyway, all that to say, we had a lot of folks in town last year, and expect the same for this year. These were three recent articles from June, July, and August that featured Seabrook. Just to look at the circulation numbers, Newsbreak, almost has almost 14 million people in circulation, SevenLiving.com. 12 million, and PureWow, 7.9 million people are subscribing to PureWow.com. And I said, oh, what's PureWow.com? It's an online service that offers genius tips, tricks, and beautiful things. And here's what they had to say about Seabrook. Seabrook Island is a downright dreamy place to live or visit. A lot of people choose to reside in this private oceanfront community because it's pretty as a picture with natural beauty, color, nationally recognized for watching two award-winning golf courses, near empty beaches, a racket club, and equestrian center, and stunning houses we happily call home. So, just a few mentions that we've seen recently on behalf of Seabrook Island. Sales. Once again, we're returning to the Turk Report on page two. Our ATAX eligible expenditure is $1.6 million, of which we're achieving just under $20,000. Now, this group is all about relationships as well, and our team attends 41 different trade shows. Or is planning to attend 41 different trade shows this fiscal year. So, what constitutes a group? A group is 10 or more individuals, and, and they may be planning a family reunion, or a corporate meeting, or anything in between. So, this just kind of runs through some of the strategies that we're going to, and the different markets that we're looking to capture and or attract. Seabrook's largest benefit here is our wedding efforts. And we're attending four wedding shows this year in Nashville, Savannah, Charlotte, and Dallas. You know, it's really interesting. They say that Texans do everything better. It's not uncommon for a bride from Dallas to get married here and spend north of six figures. So, they truly do things better, and I think they like to compete with each other, too. We'd be happy for them to have their wedding here. Visitor Services and Support. You will find the details for this particular segment beginning on page three in the report. We spend about $1.7 million in Serena, and we're attributing $21,000 to Seabrook. You know, our job is to promote the community. Marketing is our job. But we also have a responsibility to help manage visitors when they arrive here, or when they're thinking about planning a trip here. Not just so that we can manage their expectations, but so that we can help them be good visitors to our community. Quality of life matters, and as I mentioned, we're locals, too, so we understand the value of that as well. We have four visitor centers. We don't own any of them, but we operate them. Just across the road at Kewa Island, we have a visitor center in waterfront parking lot, Pleasant. We have a visitor center inside the Fire Museum in North Charleston at Tanger. And our officers are at the Houston Cycle Visitor Center that is one of the, the city of Charleston just spent. I say just spent, over the last couple of years, spent $8 million to renovate that facility. So, I encourage you, if you're down town, to take a stop in because it's very different from the last time you were in that building. Do visitor centers still matter? Do books like this still matter? You know, books will say that to us a lot. And the answer is yes, because the world we live in, people are consuming information in all kinds of ways right now. So, we really have to be in a lot of different places and a lot of different platforms. But what we know is it relates to visitor centers is that people still like to talk to locals. They might go online and look at a review, but they still like to talk to somebody that lives here and, and find out what they do, he do. We know that if we can be one-on-one with them, that we can help them understand how to be good visitors to our community. So, we're happy, happy to do that. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I will be happy to answer any questions or my teammates, and just thank you again.
Well, do you, Lori, any questions for Lori, anyone, including, uh, members of the ATAX who are still on?
I have a question. It's Susan Legger. Um, how do you decide what the attribution is to each of the municipalities? How's that determined?
That's a great question. What we've done is taken the, uh, share of revenue and applied that percentage back out. So we are anticipating, you can see on the Turk Report, we are, we have budgeted this year to receive a hundred and one thousand dollars from Seabrook. And that's based on last year's performance and what we anticipate for the coming year's performance. And we're budgeting to receive from all ten municipal governments, eight point two million dollars. So we apply the attribute, we attribute it back out based on that share, if that makes sense.
So that's really based on act, an estimated actual?
Yes, ma'am.
Sort of.
Yes, ma'am. And then we will come back to you at years end to give you some actual numbers.
Uh-huh. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one more question. Wh- where is the Kiowa Island Visitor Center?
Oh, it's inside. Good question. It's inside, um, Town Hall, inside their new town hall.
Okay, great.
Stop in and see Nae. She's, she'll get you tickets for wherever you want to go.
Any other questions for, for Lori?
I do have one, one question and I'm not sure Lori's going to be able to answer this. It's Joanne Fagan. Um, it, I'm not a current club member. I was under the impression that the club doesn't allow outside weddings. It doesn't allow outside golfers or tennis players unless they're accompanied by a member. Is that correct? And if so, are we misleading in the advertisement?
I can, Joanne, I'll jump in. This is Jerry and they are, they do book, uh, non-member weddings.
Okay. And what about golf and tennis? Since that was a whole page of advertisement in the promotional information?
Well, I think, you know, the club may not like some of that wording, but I think the advertisement is if you come stay here, you can play golf and tennis.
Okay.
It's advertising it in that direction. It's not like saying, stay downtown and come out here and play golf. I think the promotion is if you're staying on the island, look at our fantastic golf courses and tennis facility.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Jerry, I think that the, uh, way this had worked in the past, and as far as I know, it's still true today, that, uh, a rental guest of a club member can have a, an amenity card arranged by the property owner, uh, host, so that that rental guest will have access to play golf with the club or tennis.
That's, that's correct. And they also with their amenity card have access to food and beverage facilities. So I, I'll just, I'll throw out there too, that this, this issue of advertising came up at the open meeting, this last open meeting the club had. And afterwards talking, um, I was talking to the marketing person for the club and referred her to explore Charleston for how the town has to by law fund some things that, uh, members thought the club was funding. So, um, I think there's probably some communication going on there that, you know, is outside the town's jurisdiction.
Thank you.
I will say that we do work closely with the club. In fact, Annie can, uh, speak to that if you would like. But very much, uh, uh, we seek to, uh, to work with the town and the club to be sure that we are, uh, promoting you in the way you want to be promoted. I'm not saying that right.
Other questions?
Can I ask a couple about this report? I know these aren't specific to Seabrook, but you do want some of the beach communities together. Is this only hotel data or deep pool from rental, like short-term Airbnb and VRVO and those two?
Yeah, actually, um, that is actually what you're seeing all short-term rental vacation money. That is not any hotel data in there. We want that to be very specific to, to the business.
Thank you. Um, and I have another question. One of the things that, and obviously we watch our ATAX money coming in very closely. Um, there's been a lot of, uh, discussion and debate about short-term rental properties here on our island and others around the Charleston region. Um, we actually had a, a committee that worked on the issue and made some recommendations, um, several months ago. And, and one of their key findings was that we've seen historic numbers during the pandemic and before making some very substantial changes, kind of waiting to see if those numbers are, and trends are here to stay or if we're gradually starting to see, you know, some changes to what we've had over the last couple of years. So the, the thing that jumps out to me is, um, you had the occupancy rates in here. And looking at the first, I guess, seven months of this year, and at least in the Charleston beaches, the occupancy rates are down year over year, um, from twenty twenty-one. Um, do you think that has much to do, and, and, you know, some of the things that we discussed here, really the last two years is if people are working remotely, their kids are in school remotely, well, yeah, you can pack up and go to Seabrook in February or March or whatever. But if your kids are back in school, you're back in the office, you can't do that anymore. Do you think that's kind of driving some of the changes? And, and it's not just like a one or two month thing, but really every month so far this year that you had data, they're all pretty much down. I mean, some of them more substantially than others, like, you know, seven, eight percent.
That's a, a great, great question. And I, I'd love to unpack more of this in detail with you on, on the report than we might have time for today. I think that's a great conversation you're having with the ATAX, uh, excuse me, around the short-term rentals. Because indeed, we're seeing, if I was to have this up there against twenty nineteen, um, or excuse me, twenty twenty, of course, which was still a very strong year. Occupancy was eclipsing prior year. What we saw was a dramatic increase because of everyone flocking to beaches and parks, national parks, mountains and beaches. You hit the home run coming out of the pandemic recovery. We're starting to see that, um, from an occupancy standpoint, return to what we would say, we think are going to be some more normal, lowest, uh, demand levels. So you've got there the paid and owner occupancy historic pulled up. If you look down the page, if you can scroll down, you'll notice the same thing as we're looking at booked occupancy. So what we are showing there is, um, and again, we had to press pause at the end of July on this data, but looking ahead six months, we're seeing generally speaking, that same trend of coming in just behind prior year on occupancy, which supports the, the very thing you're saying. Now, what's causing it? We're still figuring that out. I will tell you, we're seeing it across the board with all beaches. There's not one that's carrying and, and shifting the mean, if you will. Um, I think the economy is a big player. I think end up demand, we're starting to see that, uh, starting to see that play out a little bit as well. But, um, what we also would say is where, from a finance standpoint, is, it's very important to look at this from a budgeting. We've had this conversation with a few of the other communities. The ADR, the rates are still beating prior years. So from a budgetary standpoint, even though you're seeing a little dip in occupancy, it's more than being made up for by the continued strong, um, ADR, uh, demand. So again, that's the finance side on the pure demand and occupancy side. We are starting to see that come down and, and predict that for the future, probably will continue to, um, come in definitely behind twenty-one and then soon we'll be able to look deeper into twenty-two to, um, to twenty-three.
Yeah, and I, I thought it was interested, interesting that you had both the occupancy and the rates. Cause I know we just had this conversation at our ATAX committee a few weeks ago, you know, kind of what was driving. Cause we're, I mean, we've been seeing historic revenues coming in from our state, um, ATAX. And we haven't really had like good data and it was, well, we know while the number of units isn't really going up that much, we have seen over the last couple of years, they're tending to be rented more like, I guess what we call like the shoulder season, October and, you know, March and April. Um, so we've seen more of that, but probably the big one is how much the rates have gone up. And, and that's certainly reflected in, in your data. I mean, ten to like fifteen, maybe even twenty percent per month for some of them. So, yeah, that, that, that seems to be, at least for us, I think the primary driver is, is not so much an increase in the number of units or the occupancy of those units, but the rates that those ones are actually generating.
And that's the sweet spot that they're, you know, always looking for is you don't necessarily want to be at a hundred percent and have, you know, low rates. But how nice to have, uh, maybe fewer people, but at a higher rate and the comfort's still doing well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at June and July with average daily rates for the beach communities, both months over eight hundred dollars. That's, you know, that's a, that's a pretty substantial rate.
We're, we're, we've said in many of these reports how the recovery took off much faster than we expected. And it is staying from a rate standpoint even longer than we anticipated in terms of the ADR still growing. Um, and we, we are seeing that by the way, as you asked about the hotel data, if you're interested. Um, front page has a little bit about the hotel side of the world and countywide. But what I would commit, um, again, would love to get into more of this, whatever we can do to pull some different, uh, types of reports. Maybe looking back at nineteen, twenty, um, the key data platform that we're investing in, why I mentioned the research. It is a newer platform, uh, so it's something that gives us a different level of specificity in our research, both historical, uh, actuals, if you will, and forward-looking for, for our beach communities. And, and so we can't go as far back as we can with hotels, but it's certainly be happy to, to see if we can pull a little bit more comparative, um, for some of those conversations.
I'm excited to see what, what are the beach communities?
Uh, that when we say our Charleston area beaches.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That's a great question. Um, so you've got Kiowa, Isle of Palms, Folly, there are some in, uh, Sullivan's still. And then of course Seabrook, the problem with the Seabrook dynamic is that we can't pull those out specifically. It's not that you don't have as many, it's that part of this scrub of data, how they capture it, is relationships with property managers and those who participate. And so when you have a, a bigger property management group that chooses to participate, that brings more sample sizes. That's the, the current limitation. Once we can get to that point that we can break out Seabrook specifically, we're going to jump on that.
When you say brokers, does that include, uh, the, you know, Airbnb and those types of things?
Not at that level. What they're doing is they're doing two things. They're scrubbing the Airbnb, VRVO data. Um, that, that's what Key Data is doing. And the second is they're, they're creating relationships with the property management groups to, to get into their data more specifically, and then they bring the two together to create the picture. Great, great question. Happy to, happy to get into more of that as we move forward.
Any other questions? Or Lori, or any other of the members of the CACBB that are known as now Explore Charleston?
Um, this is, this is Jerry and since I couldn't be there today for council, could somebody snag me one of those packets and stick in my mailbox? I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
I was also going to add, if any of the ATAX members too, who are virtual would like a copy, we have multiple copies. If somebody would like to snag them.
Any other questions? Any other requests?
This one that you talked about the Kiowa, um, visitor center. Would it be worthwhile, I'm just hypothetical, to make it sort of like a, no, it's a Kiowa and I know it's near Hamble. So, but a Kiowa slash Seabrook visitor center?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we, we, what Nae is servicing at that desk is any question that comes in. I mean, it may be, where can I go out with shopping? And then she goes, that's in North Charleston. You know, so, um, you know, as far as the naming goes, it's just the location. At any of our centers, we're talking about the community. So, um, I'm not sure that answers your question.
Well, if we advertise it as more so as, uh, sharing a, uh, regional, I mean, Kiowa Seabrook Freshfields Visitor Center, whereas the, uh, it would be something back, uh, thinking, uh, it'd be interesting if you had a space in Freshfields, have a visitor center in there. I mean, you have people walking around there constantly. And it would be probably good from Freshfield's perspective because that brings people in who want the, um, public relationships.
Right. And see what you think and as it relates to naming that, 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 um, the building and the center is actually owned by the town. So certainly if the town are open to that, but it matters not to us. Um, but, um, but we're going to promote, we're going to promote the whole community, so.
Thank you, Lori. Any other questions? No? Very good. Well, Lori, uh, I greatly appreciate the time and work that's been put into this presentation. And, uh, I trust that the ATAX committee has received, uh, a very valuable input from your presentation. So thank you very much. Always good to have you here.
Thank you for having us.
And we will now proceed with our regular work session items.
Excuse me, sir. Do you need one vote on the, or technically two votes in the ATAX committee for the new regulations? As Lori was pointing out, to recommend approval for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and then recommendation for the budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I think I got that right. Um, so I'll need a motion second and then a vote for approval to include with the ATAX reporting for the state.
Okay. Well, in that case, uh, may I have the motion as proposed? Is there a second?
Second, second.
It's been moved and seconded to include the budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three from the Explore Charleston. Don't, don't mind me if I call it the Charleston area Invention and Visitor Year, but anyways, their twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget and, uh, any questions, comments or discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify your approval of the motion by saying aye.
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 Sounds like that carried. Okay then, Catherine?
I, I just need one more on last year's budget for FY twenty-one to twenty-two as well.
You need the twenty twenty-one?
To twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Can we have a motion for approval of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two CACBB Explore Charleston budget?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments or discussion concerning the motion for approval of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two Explore Charleston budget? Hearing none. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Is approved. Thank you. Good then, Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, uh, all may stay if they wish, but we will be on to other matters at this time. So thank you very much. So the, uh, yeah, if this what we could do is, uh, we could actually add the Pledge of Allegiance, couldn't we, Catherine?
Yes.
Okay. So please join. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We will dispense with our own call. It seems to be that all members of council are present, either in person or online. And we will now proceed with the first item on the agenda, which is my item. Uh, members of council are advised that the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three update of the Charleston Regional Hazard Navigation Plan. Is now available from the Charleston County Business Inspection Services Department. Members, agenda packets have my memorandum to that effect. With a link to access the update and including summary of changes to the plan implemented by the twenty twenty two. Notice of council, an availability update is required for the town to receive credit. Applied to the town's participation in Charleston County's community rating system. So you have. Uh, my verbal notification as well as the memorandum uh of that notification and we will. Uh, following today's meeting, we will supply Charleston County Building Business Inspection Services Department. With a confirmation that council was notified at today's meeting. And with that, we will proceed to reports of the other members. Jerry, you're up.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't have. Planned comments for today other than to say, um, the environmental wildlife committee met last Thursday. Um, and continued our discussion about revising the beach ordinance and um. We talked a lot about what Beach Patrol recommended, uh, how things could be improved. Uh, maybe remove some ambiguity in our ordinance to make it easier for them to enforce it. And um, so we kind of went around, um, didn't resolve anything. We're not yet prepared to present anything. Any recommendations to council, but the discussions are ongoing. And that is my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And uh, next up, we'll have uh, reports from Pat Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. Communications, just wanna um, say that the Seabrook article this month was by. Um, and basically I just really love that article and thank you so much for making it very because it was, I think, very. Very apropos for the time. Um, as far as the Community Promotions and Engagement Committee, um. Once again, I'm announcing that we are gonna be having the Charleston Symphony Orchestra coming to Seabrook Island on Sunday, October sixteenth. At four o'clock at the lake house. Um, in my conversations with Roger Steele. We, um, he brought up that we are celebrating our thirty fifth anniversary and I was just wondering if council had any problems with. The promotion this from tide lines, uh, if we said that it was a celebration of our thirty fifth.
Promotion of our anniversary?
Yeah, it's our thirty fifth anniversary. On our thirtieth anniversary, we have the symphony. Can we just say we're celebrating?
Well, we. We could say we'll invite the symphony for our thirty fifth anniversary.
Okay. So, um, and um, next week, I was gonna bring that up in our next meeting and that is this Thursday, September fifteenth. So council thinks it's okay, then maybe we'll just go a little, little tagline in there that it's our thirty fifth anniversary. Um, and then this morning, I. Seabrook Island Property Owners Law and Leadership Planning Meeting and from there. Two takeaways, so basically that they are. And also there's a brief discussion about the Oyster Catcher Community Center. Uh, how they're planning to possibly allow information on that. And that concludes my.
Well, thank you, Pat. Any questions for Pat? What, uh. I had heard some, some question about the community center. Functions or facility or something being moved out closer to the beach? That strikes me as, I don't know, total speculation.
Exactly. Um, basically, I think. Um, I, I have not seen any drawings or plans or anything. Saw a little mockup of it. Um, I don't know where the building is in comparison to where. The old building stands. I don't know whether that means the building's slightly moving. In a direction. I have no idea. I do know there's parking underneath, considerable parking underneath, whatever they're going to. Pools on the second floor.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, any other questions for Pat? Okay, Barry, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Public Works Committee met yesterday. Uh, a summary of that was I gave an update on where we stand with the garage and also notified everyone that the town had a meeting. With the architect for the town hall annex, which is the same architect for the garage. And it was, I guess, for practical purposes kickoff meeting. So now the architect is fully engaged with the garage. And town hall annex. Um, hopefully in a few months, we'll be able to look at something concrete with drawings. Um, other than that, we uh are still waiting for our linear park. Also known as the outbound path. We provided our engineers with. A list of items we'd like to be upgraded and hopefully we'll see some plans with that shortly as well. That's all I have.
Uh, Barry, that's ESP, isn't it?
That is ESP, same words were.
Uh, any questions for Barry? The end, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to report, I'd like to report. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we are now at the town administrator's portion of the agenda. And uh, Jerry says here that uh, you wanna have a review and discussion of the Beach Patrol options for fiscal twenty twenty three.
Uh, yes, among other items for discussion. Um, so I wanted to bring this one up. Um, for discussion today because it is a um outstanding budget item. We have the budget. It's about. Ninety-nine percent ready um to go to the mayor, but um, we had just a couple, a couple outstanding items. So the Beach Patrol one. Um, this came out of a discussion at our workshop um last month about whether. Um, our current levels of service were adequate for uh, you know, demand and existing conditions out on the beach. So as a follow-up to that discussion, uh, we had a meeting myself. Um, and council members Finkie and Court Valesi with the um Beach Patrol contractor, Island Beach Services. Um, to talk about, um, you know, basically existing conditions out on the beach as well as. Um, you know, current and future service levels. So. Um, one of the, the primary responses that we got out of that meeting. Was their biggest issue in terms of providing service on the beach has been changes uh in topography on the beach. Um, in prior years, they were able to uh go around the point at um. The area in front of the uh, the beach club and access both sides um of the beach, the Atlantic and the Edisto side. Um, just based on the existing conditions in that area. Um, they're, for all practical purposes, just not able to, to do that anymore. Uh, pretty much any time during the day. Um, so the way our, our beach patrol is currently set up, we have. Um, daily service that starts April first and it goes through September thirtieth. Um, for the, the peak portion of the year, um, which is just before. Um, Memorial Day through about the middle of August, uh, we have coverage, um, twelve hours per day. So the first shift will go out from eight AM to four PM. That's two people in one vehicle. And then the second shift goes out from uh noon to eight PM. Um, so between the, the peak of the peak, the noon to four PM, we do have four people in two vehicles. Uh, out on the beach, um, at least in theory. That's also a time where they tend to uh go to lunch too. So there's not necessarily at all times are there gonna be two people and two vehicles out on the beach. Um, but else, elsewhere during the season, um, we may have anywhere from one or two people. With one vehicle on the beach, where that becomes problematic is if, um, just say, for example, if Beach Patrol. Uh, the Beach Patrol vehicle is up on the uh Edisto side, there's an issue out on the uh Atlantic side. What they have to do, because they can no longer drive around from one side to the other, they have to go back up to. Um, the beach access point at Captain Sam's, they have to drive through uh the neighborhood, Seabrook Island Road. And then back out to Boardwalk two to get back onto the beach and then go out to um wherever the issue is. Um, so one of the, the key discussion points of that meeting was. Just from a public safety standpoint, it would be most beneficial to have, uh, at a minimum, two vehicles on the beach during. Uh, the beach patrol season. Um, and then we did discuss a couple other additional options. One of them was if we wanted to. Uh, extend our season by adding the months of March and October. Um, primarily for the reason of March, that's red knot season. October, uh, we're hitting the tail end of um turtle. Uh, nesting or more so hatching season. Um. And then on top of that, kind of in the background, we also have, this is our uh second year of what can be up to a five-year contract. So. Contract is structured. We had a two-year initial term and then the town has the option for the next three years to. Uh, continue that contract and to make any modifications that are mutually agreeable to both parties. Um, we know the Beach Patrol Company is dealing with the same thing. We're dealing with um personnel costs and um fuel costs. Um, so we had an assumption that uh even absent any changes in service levels, we were probably. Um, going to be expecting a um, an increase in the cost of our existing contract. So what we asked the um contractor to do was to provide us three options. Um, they actually gave us four and I'll. Second, but uh, the first one is basically just keeping what we have. Um, same level of service, same date, same hours. Um, but all this one is doing is just increasing the, the base costs. Um, to reflect their uh higher costs of fuel and personnel. I mean, that's their two primary. Uh, expenses related to providing the service or personnel uh and fuel. Um, right now, we're at about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, so this is a uh. An increase of just under twenty-five thousand uh for the season. But again, this is no change to level of service, no change to dates, hours, anything like that. Just keeping what we have now. Uh, option two um would be maintaining the same dates and hours. Um, that we have Beach Patrol coverage. Uh, so again, staying between um April first and September thirtieth. Uh, but in this instance, we would have at all time, two people and two vehicles. So we would. Um, reduce the, the possibility of having an incident where you would have to move. Uh, vehicles and personnel from one side of the beach to the other. There should, at most times, I say most because they're still. Take lunch breaks and whatnot, but at most times during the day, um, we would have one vehicle uh on both sides of the beach. So the cost of doing that, uh, we'd be adding about thirty thousand additional to the contract. Uh, bringing it to just over two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the third option would be if we wanted to add the additional month of March and October. Um, those two additional months would uh basically add an additional thirty thousand on top of that. So we'd go from. Two oh nine to about two hundred and sixty-nine. Uh, and in that email, um, the Beach Patrol Contractor. Um, did explain that it um does become difficult for them to retain trained and certified staff. Um, as early as March and as late as October, and that it does increase their cost of um providing that. So it's not necessarily a, a pro rata increase. You'd actually be paying more to add those two additional months. Because it would come at a higher cost to them. Uh, so as a result, they um included an option four. Um, because it would only add about another twenty-four thousand, um, which would basically be year-round. Um, service. Um, that would be at two hundred ninety-three thousand eight, maybe two dollars. Um, at our last meeting, uh, if you recall, council authorized the hiring of a. Full-time code enforcement officer, um, which we've never had before. Uh, we also will be. Uh, continuing um our presence on evening and weekends presumably going forward in the upcoming budget year. So at this point, I think my recommendation to you is that we would pursue option two. Um, which is maintaining our existing level, uh, or the existing dates and times of coverage. Um, but increasing the level of service so that we would uh always have at a minimum two people and two vehicles on the beach. Um, and as I mentioned, that one would come across with a cost of about two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, if we, um, a- and again, that's based on the assumption that we now will have a full-time. On staff, you know, regular office hours, code enforcement officer. So. That person will be out on the beach, you know, during those off-peak times. Um, they'll be in the field most of the day and available to respond. Uh, if there is an issue, if there is a complaint. Um, and that's not something that we've ever had before. Um, so I would say for this year, we would move forward with option two. Um, let's get a year of code enforcement under our belt and then we could go back and reevaluate that. Next year and see if we wanted to um add additional uh months of coverage to our, our Beach Patrol schedule. But that, that would be my recommendation at this point.
Yeah, just a quick question. If you would go to the, the um. Table for option two. And I see where May twenty-second, August thirteenth is highlighted. Okay, so from eight AM to four PM, it says you've got two people, one vehicle. And then from twelve noon to eight PM, two people, one vehicle. Okay, so that means that. From eight until noon. And from four to eight, you only have one vehicle. Okay, so therefore, if you go April first to May twenty-first, which is a less. We have two vehicles on there from nine to five. In other words, we're have more. Two-vehicle coverage, April first to May twenty-first. Time-wise than we do in the. And I may be reading this wrong, but there's only two vehicles and I'm, I'm assuming what you're saying is that the code enforcement person. Will cover that. But my point is. There's two vehicles according to this table from twelve to four. And the April to May season, there's two vehicles from nine to five.
Yeah, I, I had highlighted that just to refer back to a comment that I made in the text of my email. What I said in my email too, and this is what I've sent to them, um, and I said, for pricing purposes for twenty twenty-three, let's start with three options. First is maintain the same coverage. Second would keep the same dates, but ensure we have at least two people and two vehicles on the beach at all times. The third would be the same as the second, but would add one person, one vehicle for the months of March and October. And then I said, for options two and three, I'm not sure how you would need to do it logistically, since it would be two people, two vehicles from eight to noon. And then from four to eight, but four people and two vehicles between new and noon and four, when the two shifts overlap. I was basically saying, you guys figure it out. We just need to make sure that we have two vehicles on the beach. Um, and so if you look at it in the context of that, that's what we were asking and I was just highlighting. The portion where I was saying, this is something you need to figure out.
So therefore, before we make a decision, they will figure that out for us?
I mean, that's included in the pricing logistics.
Understand. Do you understand what my question is? I mean, of course, again, I'm going to just buy what this is. And you're saying let them figure it out. My point is, okay, figure it out and let me let us know what it is.
Yeah, I mean, the contract will come back to you. That still has to be approved.
Right.
So I mean, all that would be laid out in the contract, which we would do. I think we typically do that in February or March. But for the purpose of the budget, that's going to the mayor this week. So I needed a number to
Fully support the, you know, option two or even the, I would say even as much as option three. I mean, we get more done, but
But but the short answer to your question is, we are asking for two vehicles on the beach at all.
So it's a mirror of the nine of all.
To mirror, say it again.
I I can say from April to May 21st. There's one person in a vehicle on one edge of the beach and then there's one person in one vehicle on the other.
From nine to five.
From nine to five.
Correct.
So if we get into the, you know, the peak season. It's it seems to me that why are we putting two people in a vehicle at the same time? Or one was enough before?
Just for more eyes on the beach?
I'm looking at it from the vehicle, according to again, your their table. I don't know whose table this is, to the table. From eight till noon, there's one vehicle.
If you're only looking at that table and ignoring the context of what I put text above that. Where I said, we need two people on the beach. Two vehicles on the beach at all time, Beach Patrol's present. So right now, it is two people in one vehicle. And then another shift will come out at noon and then you have overlap. What I was highlighting on there was saying, right now, it's two and one, two and one. And the text of the email is, it needs to be two vehicles the whole time. So it may mean mean shuttling two people out at noon to spread out into those two vehicles and then taking them off later on. However, they do that, that's up for them to decide the best way to to do that. But what I put in the email was, we need two vehicles on the beach at all times.
So Jerry, the increase over 2022, where option two is about 55,000.
Two. Yes, so right now, we're at about 185.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's about 54 and change.
So the obvious question is, is that is that a challenge for us to cover?
We we can cover it. It will require dedicating some funds out of the general fund to do it. Absent another item I have later on from my discussion.
Which we've done in the past. We have general funds to cover the shortfall. Where we didn't use accommodation tax money.
Yeah, especially when the the county shut off their county accommodations tax during the pandemic. We quite a bit of general fund to make up that difference. And then we had also budgeted to spend down some of our state ATV balance to help make up that difference. The issue was, we had a whole bunch of people who were staying here during the pandemic. And we ended up collecting way more than we budgeted. We actually ended up not spending down the balance. Revenues were up so much.
And because revenues for accommodation tax were up. Thank you. Before we looked at this, that it might be possible to cover each patrol entirely with accommodation tax for 2023.
If if we didn't fund anything else.
But I think you were You may have been guessing what the increase would be, the inflationary increase would be from there.
That may have been in the context of a local ATV. Because I think a local ATV would probably generate about the cost of that contract.
Joe, this is Jerry. If you didn't figure that out. So when we were meeting with Beach Patrol and and talking about all different ways to to improve coverage on the beach. Or maybe how, we talked a little bit about an ATV. And they said that they would ponder how that might work. Certainly, an issue was storage, how to get it to the beach. But it would spread, it would give more beach coverage because there'd be one person in a truck and maybe one on an ATV. So since they didn't come back with any of that in their four options. Are are we just assuming they think right now that wouldn't work?
Uh, I mean, I don't know that we're necessarily assuming that. We, when I sent them the request, I did not include an ATV. If we want to include an ATV, we would have to I mean, they'll do whatever we want them to do. So if we want an ATV or two ATVs or 10 ATVs on the beach, we just need to let them know. And they would price it in their their contract.
You know, one thing I wanted to say to counsel because I support Joe's recommendation for option two. But with Beach Patrol and and with Joe, we've in in the birders and turtle folks. We've had a lot of discussion about those months about adding March and October. And I really agree with Joe that with a full time enforcement person coming on. And Tyler even mentioned in one of our discussions that it could be possible to have them do like an earlier in the morning shift so that they're around when the migrating birds. There might be an issue with them or something with the turtles in October. So I think it's a really good idea to see how that full time enforcement person works in and coordinates with Beach Patrol before we jump in with all that extra money to add those months. But you know, whoever is listening right now and for counsel, just to know that we had an in-depth discussion of how best that we might cover that if there's problems for birds and turtles. Other than that, I will, I will let the ATV issue maybe die for now. If you did read the little local newspaper, we did never recommend an 18 wheeler on the beach.
So Jerry, what what is faulting the idea of having Beach Patrol have an ATV out there? What what are you looking for?
It was just a matter of, you know, sometimes on the beach, especially you know, peak season, middle of the day, they could be way up by Captain Sam's. And something happens down by the beach club. If if you split up those two people in separate vehicles, then we have more coverage. Instead of two people in one vehicle and they've got a couple miles to get down to an incident. If you had an ATV, it's not, you know, the cost of a of a pickup truck. You could just maybe spread out the coverage. And Beach Patrol in our meeting agreed with that concept, but there's a couple of problems. We'd have to do some special arrangement or agreement or something because those ATV can't drive on the street. So it's like, how would you get it to the beach? Because they already with their trailer, get the the jet ski and everything there in the mornings. So they really don't have that ability. We talked a little bit about, could it be stored at the camp and use it on that side? The other problem is, I think, under state regulations that an ATV doesn't count as an emergency vehicle. So everything still has to be on the pickup. If there was an incident, they'd still have to bring down. It would just be a situation where there was personnel there for the incident. So I mean, there's pros and cons to it. We were just having this very detailed discussion of how do we cover the beach better? So that's where the ATV issue came up. And am I right, Joe? Didn't they say they have one over on Kiowa, but they rust out really badly?
I don't remember if he said they had one on Kiowa, but he did say they they typically will only last about three years on the beach and garden.
Right. So I mean, maybe we, you know, go with option two and our new full time enforcement officer and just see how you know, that plays out for another summer before we jump in with that additional cost.
So Jerry, you know, we're talking about essentially the beach being served. The two ends of the beach being served separately by Beach Patrol's presence.
Right.
Saying, but only one end would be, only one of those two ends would be served by an ATV? Or do you need two EVs?
I mean, that would, I mean, it could go both ways. I mean, at low tide, an ATV could probably still get around the point at the island. But otherwise, no. But also, an ATV has an easier way to access out to the street to get over to, say, from the Edisto to the Atlantic side. So it was just an option from some research that in meeting with Beach Patrol, we just threw out that discussion. And you know, it's also would would they have an ATV? Would they purchase it? I think they told us it's like five or 6,000 for the one they would pick. Or does the town purchase it and have them operate it with our enforcement officers? So I mean, a lot of options, it's certainly, you know, not black and white of if it would be a good idea or not.
Joe, just following up with when that, again, going back to that table. It says two vehicles. We provided two vehicles.
No, those are included in the contract.
Those you buy then? Okay.
Yeah, they they will brand them with a town logo, but their island beach services. The only thing we provide for that entire contract is we give them an AED, that they have to keep an AED on the beach in one of the vehicles. And then we give them badges and coatlets. They provide everything else.
Any more questions for Joe as far as Beach Patrol proposals?
And two radios. I said, and two radios, we give them the two radio.
Joe, dude, I can't remember, do their shirts say like Seabrook Island Beach Patrol or do they say something else?
Yeah, they have a town logo on the front chest and I think they just say Beach Patrol on the back.
Okay.
Yeah, they they do have a standard uniform that they wear.
That they come up with, we don't provide that, right?
No, they provide that.
Okay, thanks.
And then we'll get more information on the logistics of how they will get transition from two and two to four and two. And we'll get that before we bring it back for contract approval for next year. But if there's no objection to that, that's probably what we will be including in the the draft budget that you see in a couple of weeks. The next item we have, I'd like to review and discuss the draft DSO fee schedule. So when we had our budget kickoff meeting several weeks ago, we had talked about it had been a couple of years and that would be an appropriate time to review our our fee schedule. At our our budget workshop, I had mentioned when we were going in and doing a breakdown of portioning out what percent of our total budget, we could actually count towards the provision of zoning and planning related services. It was around $200,000. But we only collect about $40,000 in planning and zoning fees. When you take out the short term rental permits, which now that we're over a certain threshold, those are going to be pulled out as a separate separate fund in our budget as required by law. So basically, the cost of providing the the zoning and planning related services is many multiples higher than what our fees are generating. So what we wanted to do was go in and and revisit our fees. We're not trying to go in and increase all of them by 500% to make it, you know, fully self supporting. But we do think that several, in fact, most of our our fees on our schedule probably should go up. So we basically started with the framework of our existing fee schedule. We did make several changes, a few of them are based on the new DSO. But by and large, most of them, and this will come through as a separate ordinance. So you're not voting on anything today. Probably not even at your your next meeting. It has to go through Planning Commission because it's an amendment to the DSO. And then we'll come back to council for approval. But I'm not going to go through and and read read through all of them because it's, you know, seven pages of an ordinance. But and then we also sent two copies. One of them was a clean version, one of them is a red line version. In my opinion, the red line version will give you a headache, just trying to look at it and figure out what's happening. But I did want to give you the red line version just so you can see every change that we've recommended to that fee schedule. I I will focus on on a couple significant changes though. So one of them, in the recommended fee schedule, you'll see that that we've recommended for new construction for basically all of our different zoning classifications that we go to a model of taking the construction value times a percentage. And I I didn't pick that percentage out of thin air. One of the things that we looked at, pull this one up. We pulled based on our 2021. Might need to zoom in on that. So one of the things we wanted to look at, just to kind of illustrate what we're collecting as opposed to what the county is collecting. We actually pulled, these are all the new single family homes that were built in 2021. So the the first column on the left hand side, that's the value of that project. So I mean, they range, we had a couple 316,000 to, you know, well over a million, 1.4 some odd, I think was our highest. So the next three columns, the first one in blue, that's what the county charges for the building permit. And they have a form. And that basically covers their administrative costs of performing the permitting. And then more so the inspection service on the backend. So when you issue a permit, they go out to that property multiple times. There's a lot of record keeping and different things that they do. That's that's accounted for in the county permit. On top of that, they take whatever the permit is and they assess a plan review fee. On top of that, they take whatever the permit is and they assess a plan review fee. And that covers the service of them reviewing the plan for that particular building. Um, and there is a set by ordinance at half of the permit fee, and then their permit fee is tied to the value of the construction. So the third column is basically a a sum of the first two, the permit plus the plan review fee. So you'll see, just looking at that first home, it was eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The county on that project collected almost twenty-eight hundred on a permit fee. They collected almost fourteen hundred on a plan review fee, uh, and over forty-one hundred combined on that project. We collect two hundred dollars. Um, we're doing, I would argue, probably about as much as what the county's doing, at the very least, on the plan review side. Um, but then we also have, you know, um, while we're not inspecting the structure, we're going by all the time. Making sure that they've submitted all of their, um, you know, foundation surveys and elevations. And, you know, if they've, if they've topped off the structure, we need to know we should be getting the um, the height certificate. Um, we, of course, do all the permitting. Uh, if there's violations, we enforce the violations. Um, we actually compile all the documents. We issue the CO, not the county, two hundred dollars. Um, almost comically low compared to uh, what the county has. In fact, if you go to the very bottom. Um, of that, uh, compared to what the county collects, uh, we we collected sixty-two hundred. Um, total for everything that we do for those new construction projects. The county collected, just for the plan review, forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Um, so we've collected about twelve point seven five percent of what the county collects. So they're about eight times more um, from the same, you know, new construction project than than what we collect. So we say, well, if we were going to do kind of what we had been doing in the past, just have, you know, some across-the-board increase, that's the orange column. Say it's three fifty, we're at ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Still way, way, way less than anything that the county's doing. Um, so we went back and said, well, what if we. Tried to get to about where county is, only on the planner view side, not the permitting side, but the planner view side. Um, what we would have collected was about point one six five percent of the value of each project. So we said, well, let's look at if we did one half of one percent, one tenth of, pardon, I'm sorry, one one hundredth of one percent. Five one hundreds of one percent, one tenth of one percent. Point one five of one percent, and then of course, point one six five of one percent. And basically, we came up with, if we use point one five percent times the construction value. We're not collecting the full amount of what the county has, but we are collecting about forty-four thousand off of those same projects. So it's putting us in the same orbit of where the county is. Um, and again, that's only the county's plan review. It's not the total permit cost. Because we're not doing, you know, all the building inspections and those type of things. So we were looking at, to get us to the county's plan review. Um, and we said, well, if we just kind of throw it in at a point one five percent times the construction value. So if you go back to the fee schedule for residential new construction. Uh, for residential townhome and multifamily new construction. And then for non-residential, which is, you know, commercial, anything that's not a residential, um, new construction. Um, what we would recommend is taking the value of the construction times point one five percent. So I say point one five, I'm not talking fifteen percent, it's zero point one five percent. And you can see on on that schedule what that would mean in the green column. Um, the actual zoning permit for each of those new construction projects would have been. So it's a a much different way that we have done it in the past, but in my opinion, puts us in line with the county. Um, and more accurately reflects our cost of providing uh, these services. Because it's not like, you know, a fence, you sign it, well, you know, you look at a site plan, you sign it and that's it. I mean, when we issue a new permit, this is something that we're tracking and, you know, processing. Um, a whole bunch of things over, most of them between twelve and twenty-four months. Actually, I have some that have gone over twenty-four months. So to me, two hundred dollar permit is. Almost laughable, but that's what it is. Um, so our recommendation is is to switch to this new value-based. Approach for new construction. So that's probably the the biggest change in the fee schedule. Um, like I said, we have a lot of them. We're just, you know, across the board. Um, the values are going up. Now, some of these, as we were going through the DSO, we said. Well, we can do it this way, but you know, there's a cost of of X, or there's a cost of Z. So. As things like newspaper advertisements go up and, you know, when we're recording plaits and taking them to Charleston County. Um, the cost of taking a staff member two hours or more to go downtown. The fuel and everything, um, you know, everything by and large across the board. Goes up to some degree, some more than others. We also, probably the other major change that I've included.
Joe, before you get on to the next. What is the? What what is the basis of construction value that you're going to use in calculating the fee?
So what the county uses is the higher of, um, there is a building valuation data. Which is something that they pull from international code council publications. Or the actual contract price for um, construction of that particular building. And I think out here, just with all the finishes and, you know, different things that we have. Uh, I pulled a sample, every single one of them, the quoted contract price was the price that the county used. Um, so we get that contract price because that's what the uh, the general contractor uses for their license. Um, purposes, and we also include that on the zoning permit form, and I believe we also require that they provide a. Copy of the contract, so that's where we get that information.
So that will be, that definition for construction value will be built in somewhere in the ordinance.
Uh, yeah, I can put it down. I don't think I have it in here, but we can, we can put that in.
Well, it seems to me that it has to be there, otherwise. It it's left to somebody that has to pay the fee to figure out what the construction is.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a standard definition, so we can throw that in there.
But it needs to be somewhere.
Yeah. It's amazing. So the other one I wanted to highlight was um, on the. Short-term rental permits, and I'd already mentioned, and we talked about this um, uh, a few weeks back at the budget workshop. Um, now that the permit revenue has exceeded the the state threshold, where we have to. Pull it out and account for it separately, as we were putting the draft budget together. Um, again, we also went in and apportioned out, you know, code enforcement, short-term rental compliance manager. Um, different uh. You know, there are cell phones and fuel and vehicle replacement costs and all that. And we came up with an actual cost of administering and enforcing our short-term rental permit ordinance, which is. Uh, significantly higher than what we collect from our existing fee amount. So basically, to get to about where. Um, we would need to be to cover the level of enforcement that we're planning to have in next year's budget. Um, that permit fee would need to go to about four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, for both a a new and a renewal. Uh, right now, we're at two fifty, so it is a a sizable increase, but the last two years, we've added more code enforcement. Um, full-time code enforcement, we're getting ready to add a full-time short-term rental compliance manager. We're going to be purchasing uh, an additional vehicle in the upcoming budget. Um, so the costs are significantly higher than what they were, or will be higher than what they were when that fee was adopted. Um, just under two years ago. Um, so we've recommended four fifty for new and renewal. Um, we'd keep a change of owner, agent, or local contact at twenty-five and all other modifications, which primarily if. That would include, like, if someone goes to the county, if they disagree with how many bedrooms we say that that unit had. They may go through the county, the county will update the number of bedrooms for that particular unit, and then that would be considered a modification. So, um, not really changing those two. We haven't suspended any permits, but we did have in our. Off of the new permit fee amount. The the, probably the the most significant change besides increasing the fee amount is. Um, on the late fees. So right now, we just charge an across-the-board late fee uh, of a hundred dollars. So if the application comes in after the deadline, whether it's a day late or six months late, they pay a hundred dollars. Just in the last two years, those first thirty days, it's fairly light enforcement. It's, you know, phone calls, emails, those type things. So what we've recommended is for the the first thirty-one days, uh, because they're due. Um, April thirtieth, so thirty-one days puts them at the end of May. If they come between that period, it's one-third, so a hundred and fifty-dollar late fee. Uh, if they come in the next thirty-day period, which is basically the month of June, that was two-thirds. Because at this point, we're now starting to send certified letters, we're having to pull. Um, you know, tax records and compile information. We're uh, in our host compliance system, we're seeing, you know, has this property rented after May first? You know, things that we need to to build an enforcement case. So if they're between thirty-two and sixty-one days late, the late fee would go to three hundred dollars. And if they're more than sixty-one days late, so at this point, if it's after July first, um, their fee would double. Um, so it's a four hundred and fifty-dollar uh, late fee, uh, and that's if it comes in any time after sixty-one days. So it's more of a graduated approach um, to the late fees. But again, it's tied to the amount of time, effort. Postage, different things that we have to do as we kind of graduate our um, enforcement activity. Um, at various stages in that process. So, um. You know, I'll give you an example. I I let you know by email, a couple of weeks ago, we had a handful that still hadn't renewed. For this year, even though they were due May sixteenth. I mean, it got to the point where we were actually out. Property to property, posting the properties with um, notices of violations. I mean, that's very time-consuming, it's it's staff-intensive, and our fees should uh, should reflect that. So, um, that's why we've um, recommended going to a um, a graduated scale um, with the fees. So. For the most part, those are the the major changes. Um, like I said, pretty much all of these across the board are going up. And in some way, shape, or fashion, um, but they're not going up. To an extent that it's going to fully cover the cost of providing zoning. The co-zoning-related code enforcement uh, and the planning activities. I mean, some of that's still going to be. Uh, offset and absorbed by our general fund, but it will um, lessen the gap between what it's costing the town. And what we're generating from uh, from these different fees. So I know you just got this, I think, yesterday, or maybe even this morning. So you probably haven't even had a chance to review it all, um, but I would encourage you over the next few weeks to to take some time with that. Uh, and if you have any questions, you know, feel free to reach out and we'll uh, go through. And, you know, if you want an explanation of why we've recommending setting something at at what we've recommended, just, you know, let us know. Happy to answer those questions. Any other questions on the fee schedule?
Two questions. So going back to the plan, the fee for the construction. How confident are you? You you commented that, do you have a a confidence level of how much we're actually? It's costing us to do the plant, the plan review itself. How much the plan review is actually costing on the structure? Well, you were saying that uh, the Charleston County charge, if you go back to that one table with the first example, the eight-twenty was the current. You were saying that you feel that the county's plan review of thirteen seventy-nine, that you put in as much effort as the county does. Are you confident in that?
If we're only talking about plan review.
Correct.
No, I think the county plan review is more extensive. Because they're getting into building systems where we're looking at setbacks and heights and, you know, those type of things. So if we're looking only at plan review, I would say their plan review is a higher level than our plan review. I think where we draw closer to their plan review is all the other stuff that we do. Um, that's not captured as part of their plan review fee.
Okay. Well, because my only comments are. Before we just arbitrarily say, well, we should set it at whatever was point one five percent. I don't think there's any reason to just arbitrarily discount it. If we feel the cost is really point one six five percent. We should set it as close to the actual cost, so that we don't have to readjust this again. And we should try to set it to, I mean, you know, if if that's our cost, we should try to set it as close to a low cost and not round down for some arbitrary reason. So my feeling would be is if we, if we look at this again when we do our budget, if you could come back and say, no, that there are, our real costs are closer to the. Point one six five percent, then I I think that should be made aware to us.
Yeah, I I put it in at point one five, just to leave a little margin of error, because really, we're just looking at one year, so.
I realize that, but but I, again, I think we should get as close as possible.
Yeah.
And then one other comment, just off. Just a quick review, uh, on the short-term rentals, I think the late application fees. You've imposed at thirty-one days and at sixty-one days are fine. I think over sixty-one days, there should be a significant penalty, not four fifty, but I'm saying significant. Someone doesn't do it, it's just not the cost of doing business.
Yeah, I I would like to, and and I assume we've we've talked about it several times over this year. That we'll be bringing some amendments to the ordinance. To me, the most. Punitive thing we can do is if if it's beyond sixty-one days late. We should have already issued at least one and potentially multiple violations, um, is in the ordinance. Right now, we have the ability to suspend or revoke an existing permit. But there's nothing in the ordinance that allows us to withhold the granting of the permit. So I think if, whether it's tied to number of days or number of violations or or what have you, that. We need that built into the ordinance, because that's going to be the biggest tool that we have to ensure. Compliance is that if if you don't, then we're not going to issue you a permit. And, you know, whether it's three months, six months, a year, whatever, I mean, that's all policy decision. But that, I think, is something we need to write into the ordinance.
That's fine, because like, I mean, I look at this and I think, you know, thirty-one days, it's a mistake. Sixty days, it's a mistake. If if nine months into it, we catch them. It's just the cost of doing business. We're sending a bill for one hundred and fifty dollars, and they're like, oh, well, thank you very much. If if they got away with it, they would have saved one hundred and fifty dollars. So if you want to amend the ordinance to take care of that, that's fine. Otherwise, I mean, the simple answer is after sixty-one days, the penalty is five thousand dollars. So it's not the cost of doing business. It's the cost of, oh, no, you've got a problem. So that, to me, is 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 a fairly simple solution. I mean.
Yeah, I I don't think we can set it arbitrarily at five thousand, just for the sake of being punitive. But, um, you know, if we could justify the cost of the town is five thousand to, you know, enforce and bring them in. Those, then certainly we can, but, um, you know, what what I've put in here, I think, is a realistic reflection of. You know, as it graduates, we're spending more time, more effort um, to bring that into compliance than. You know, after sixty days, and we are within the first couple, so. I don't think our costs are five thousand dollars.
So, so I mean, that's what I'm saying. So so the the fee then is just representative of our cost. It's not, it's not any punitive. We we have no rights to do any punitive.
If, well, our, I mean, our right is we can fine them five hundred dollars a day, so. Ten days of violations, you get your five thousand dollars, but to me, the, the best tool. Um that, that we would have is the ability to withhold the issuance of a permit after certain. You know, certain thresholds are met, because, you know, we just saw if you're sixty-one days late, you're in July. You know, the C V B just told us that the average units are getting eight hundred dollars a day, if they can't rent in July. You know, seven days at eight hundred dollars a pop, that's gonna add up pretty quick. But, but that's an ordinance amendment, that, um and we've already talked about that with, with the committee and. Uh and I, I expect having something to put before council for a vote in the next few months. Any other questions, comments, or anything? Uh and again, if you have any after today's meeting, just give me a call, shoot me an email, uh or we can talk about it in a upcoming meeting. The next item we had is an item that we had talked about at our. Um budget workshop, um so right now, the town of Seabrook Island, I believe, is one of. Maybe the only, there might be one other one, jurisdictions in Charleston County that does not have a local accommodations tax, so. Me, since nineteen ninety-three, I think it was ninety-three. Imposed a um two percent, yeah, November of nineteen ninety-three imposed a two percent. Accommodations, they called it a fee, but the way it's worded, I, I think for it to be challenged would probably be called a tax. Uh a countywide two percent accommodations fee or tax on um on the rental of lodgings. After that, a couple of years later, the state passed the local accommodations tax statute. Um which set up the procedure, you know, maximum amounts and uh how to set it up and. Um and in there, the, the statute says that the cumulative rate cannot exceed three percent. So right now, the county's at two percent, if the town wanted to enact a local. Accommodations tax, um you have the ability to do up to one percent. The, from the county's two percent that they collect for their last fiscal year, they put it at about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um so if you assumed one-half of that, about one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If you look at what we get from the state, it's actually a little bit higher, um one percent would generate probably about two hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. So that was why, when I was saying, if you were looking at the beach patrol cost, if we had a local accommodations tax. That would probably pick up all, or almost all of the cost of beach patrol, if that's how you decided you wanted to. To allocate those funds, um the nice thing with an accommodations tax is it is paid a hundred percent by visitors. Who are um staying here, transient um rental activity. So it's basically a, a pass-through tax that's not hitting your um property owners, uh it's being paid by. Renters, in our case, we don't have a hotel, so they would all be uh all short-term renters. Um so we have the ability to go up one percent, um the county. Uh we did reach out to the county revenue collections department, um they are already collecting their two percent. So they already have them set up, um where they could just collect an additional one percent. Uh it would be a uh just a contract or intergovernmental agreement that we could do with the county. They've told us they charge one-half of one percent, um so a very nominal rate, and they would do all the processing and then. I don't remember if they come monthly or quarterly, but they would issue a check for a hundred percent minus their. Their service fee, administrative fee of what they collect from our one percent local hospitality tax. So like I said, it'll probably be somewhere in the range of about one ninety to a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Uh if you wanna do it, um the. The way it would be set up, and, and I've, I've included a draft ordinance, and now this is another one that came out. Kind of late, you probably haven't had a chance to look through it in, in great detail, uh but basically, the way it would be set up, it would be a one percent. Uh lo- local accommodations tax that's imposed on the gross proceeds. Um derived from the rental of any accommodation furnished to renters within the town. Uh and it would not apply to stays over um thirty continuous days. It would be uh the liability of the renter, so they would be the one paying the fee, the host would be the one collecting the fee. And the host in turn, every month, or depending on how much it is, uh every quarter, every year, uh would remit that fee to. Either the town or the county, if we contracted with the county, um and. So that's basically how we've, we've recommended setting up, setting it up, if council wants to do it. You know, this ordinance is pretty much ready to go, um it's based on all the other jurisdictions around us, all have. Pretty much substantially the, the same or similar language, so we're not really reinventing the wheel, the only difference is. All of them adopted it before the um, the nineteen ninety-six state statute. So there's a few things in here that we had to change to correspond with the, uh the state statute language that. Some of those other ones may not have, um but uh the, the way that the funds could be spent. Um is pretty much the same as how state A tax funds can be spent, so you can use it for tourism-related buildings. Cultural recreation, recreational and historic facilities, beach access, renourishment, or other tourism-related lands and water access. Highways, roads, streets, bridges, um providing access to tourist destinations. Of course, there's one, one-way in and one-way out, so if you wanted to use it towards Seabrook Island Road, that's the only way you have tourism, is if you have Seabrook Island Road. And advertisements and promotions related to tourism development, water and sewer infrastructure to serve tourism. Related demand, um and then because we are in a county that has a high concentration of tourism. Uh you also can use it for operation and maintenance of those items included in paragraphs one through six, so. Um you know, we have used it for. Uh our beach patrol um is really the, the biggest one that we've used our state A tax for. Uh if we had a local A tax, you could use it for that, but you could also use it for um any of these other items that are. Listed here, so um.
If you're saying that beach patrol fits in number seven?
Yeah, including police, fire, emergency, medical, emergency preparedness.
So that always says tourism-related, our beach patrol is part. For residents and tourism, would you have to corrate it?
We, the way we've done it is because beach patrol historically has only been done during the peak tourism season. Uh April through September, um we do most, if not all, from A tax. Historically, we have put some amount out of um general fund, just as a reflection that it is. Also providing a benefit to residents as well, but I think if push came to shove, the fact that we. We spend those funds during the peak tourist season, you know, even if we did all of it, we'd probably be okay. Um unlike the state um A tax, the local A tax recommendations do not have to go through. Uh an advisory committee, um and it's also not subject to the state's tourism expenditure review committee. That doesn't necessarily mean you just start going willy-nilly, funding all kinds of stuff, that's inconsistent with state statute, but um. You know, you don't have that constant presence of the state leaning over your shoulder, questioning every single expenditure that you've made. Um but you are still bound by the law.
So Jerry, tell me then, how much you estimate, based on what the county's collected, we would be collecting?
So the county said last year they collected just under three hundred and eighty thousand, that's for their two percent.
Right.
Now, the way the counties are set up, they do two percent, they give us twenty percent of that two percent. So if they collect three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we get twenty percent of that, they keep the rest. Um an additional one percent would be using their numbers about a hundred and ninety thousand. Um I do think those numbers will go up this year, because we've changed our um application reporting requirements, where. In the past, we never made um the rental properties give us documentation that they're reporting to the county. And we started doing that this year, so I, I expect the, the county number should likely go up this year. Uh but based on what they were in the past, it would be half of that, so about a hundred and ninety thousand.
And you said, the county is gonna charge you a half percent, that's a half percent. Fee on what they collect, not, or not charging you a half percent to collect one percent?
I did ask them that, just to make sure, and they said it's on the gross proceeds, so if it was a hundred ninety thousand, it would be half of a percent. It's a pretty, pretty nominal, nominal fee.
They're not, they're not keeping half of what they collect for you.
No, we made sure of that.
Do we have to spend it in a short period of time, you know, a two-year time, or do you do the other, or can we put some of this money away for the road project?
I know you have to keep it in a separate fund distinct from the general fund, I don't believe you have the two-year. Threshold that you have for state, I'll have to double-check on that.
Because this would be a wonderful way to. Anyway.
Um the only thing I would say is if, you know, if council's open to this, we would bring it back as an ordinance. Um two readings, public hearing, um. If it's something that council is open to, and, you know, we think there's support for, for doing a local accommodations tax. Obviously, it would have budgetary implications for next year, um so we'd be establishing a new fund and projecting revenue. Uh we'd have to uh, even with the county, and then set a date of when we would start uh collecting those payments. We'd wanna have enough time where we can put the word out to the owners and managers of rental properties, just to make sure as of. You know, whatever date that goes into effect, they know to start charging um that extra one percent. So um there's still some logistics that would have to be worked out, we'd need to get a, a draft agreement with the county. But uh, you know, I, I feel confident we could have something ready for. I mean, the ordinance is ready, if you wanna do it, we can have that on the agenda in two weeks, but um. You know, the logistics, I feel probably by the end of the year, first of January, we could probably be set up to. To start imposing a local A tax.
Yeah, so you would, you'd do it on our calendar, is calendar not there?
Well, it's not the same, um that's another item I have, but um, no, I mean, they just collect it monthly.
Okay.
So they were remitted to us, I mean, for accounting purposes, I mean, it doesn't really make any difference. We'll treat it as one fiscal year, and they're just a, a pass-through for all practical purposes. Yeah. I mean, I would ideally know later than. May first, because the new license and short-term rental permit year starts May first, so, I mean, if you wanted more time. That would, that would be a logical. Jerry, you're quiet, did you have any comments?
Excuse me, uh when we did our strategic planning, this is one of my priorities. I think we're leaving money on the table, so I support moving forward with us a hundred percent. And I will say, that presentation we just had from Explore Charleston. That one slide had us already collecting this one percent. So anyway, I support this and appreciate the work Joe's put into it, but it was one of my pri- priorities when we did strategic planning.
Um so in the draft ordinance, there's a couple of other things we wanted to include in addition to the, the local A tax. Um what we've been trying to do, as we've been updating existing sections, kind of cleaning language up, making it consistent, so. Um and chapter twenty-six, which is our taxation chapter. We have some existing language about the state accommodations tax. There's actually a reference, wrong statute in there, so we wanna clean some of that up, um an article two, the state A tax. We really only have in there currently some language about the A tax advisory committee. So we probably should put some generic language in there that we will follow the law. And spend the money as accordance to how we're supposed to spend them, um and then the. Structure for the A tax advisory committee, just making that similar to when we redid all of our committee. Ordinances a year or so ago, just having the similar layout, defining their charge. Um we added in there that they do not only a recommendation on the sixty-five percent funds, but also the thirty percent funds, which. They talked about is now out of the new guidance coming out of the, the state oversight committee, that they have to review that, make recommendations as well, so. Just kind of cleaning that up, defining when their terms begin and end, um and, you know, just general. Uh procedural-type stuff, consistent with all the other uh committees that we did um last year. So that would be twenty. Article two of chapter twenty-six, article three would be the language for the new local accommodations tax. And then article four would actually be, um this is kind of an obscure section in state statute. Uh clearly came from the hotel lobby in Columbia, um but what it's called is the Fairness and Lodging Act. And basically, the, the state statute sets up a uh program that encourages coordination. Between S C Department of Revenue and local governments to enforce compliance with um state and local. Uh accommodations tax laws, um and um. It actually says, the findings are, are pretty much taken out of the state statute. Those who fail to collect and remit local and state accommodations taxes are competing unfairly against those who dutifully meet these. Legal obligations, um so it's something that the state has put in. And it gives local governments the ability to implement the provisions of that act. Um basically, the obligation for us would be um that we would have the ability to share information with S C D O R. Uh if it helps find and determine instances of non-compliance. Um if we do adopt this, um then we would have to um provide notice and property tax bills. So we wouldn't be able to do that this year, but starting next year, we could put a notice in any six percent um non-owner-occupied. Property tax bill that says, hey, if you're running this property, you need to be collecting state A tax, you need to be collecting county A tax. You need to be collecting town A tax, and if you have questions, here's who you call, or here's where you get the forms, whatever. Um but that would have to go in, and then once we put that in, um if, if a property owner is found. Um renting property without collecting and remitting the taxes. Normally, we can only issue a fine of up to five hundred dollars. Um under this act, we can actually issue fines of up to two thousand dollars for every seven days. That they go without collecting and remitting, so um Kiowa does have um some of this language um in theirs. Um if we're going to have a local accommodations tax, there's no reason for us not to have it in ours, and I, I think it's probably good to have it. Uh in there, so um those are all the changes that we've included in the draft ordinance. And if council's ready, I mean, we can have it on the agenda for two weeks. And if council's ready, I mean, we can have it on the agenda for two weeks. For first reading.
I would support that.
Well, I'll I'll get with the county, because before second reading, we'll have to have language for. Inter-governmental agreement with the county, so we'll we'll get the wheels in motion on that too. The other one I have, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, just for your information. We had also talked at our budget workshop about. Our Berkeley Electric Co-op Franchise Agreement. And I had reached out to Bert Walling at Berkeley to to talk about that. And we were just talking about the possibility of adjusting our franchise rate. He actually thanked me for calling and said that they've been. Working and trying to work with all the local jurisdictions to update their agreements in their entirety. They've, there's been some action at the state level with service areas. Now that. Which one is it, Dominion? Has taken over Scana, they've worked and they have some new things with service areas and those type things, so. Bert has actually sent me a copy of their new standard franchise agreement. I have not sent this for legal review or anything yet, I just wanted to to give it to you just so you can. See that we have received one. One of the things Bert did say, in our existing agreement, we have the ability to adjust our our franchise fee amount. But we have to give six months notice. If we adopt this new agreement. Bert said everyone he's worked with, I think except maybe one. As they're adopting the new one, has set their franchise fee at five percent. If we wanted to do that, we wouldn't have to wait the six months, just as soon as we adopted this, it could go into effect, so.
I'm just looking at that. Is this all that they have provided service for?
That's just our service area.
Oh, in other words, all way out on Nancy Island there?
I mean, it would be their service there, if there's nothing out there, there's nothing for them to serve, but. If something was out there, then they would be the one to provide service.
There's no Dominion. In the service map. The legend has red with Dominion. And in the map, there's no red.
Well, someone else.
Yeah, that's, that's not us. It's all Bert. So Jerry, you have highlighted or else they highlighted. There's a provision about. You can't resell electricity, and I guess the question that triggered in my mind was, we were talking about having these stations. Does a charging station have to be metered? Directly by Berkeley, or how do you avoid that prohibition?
That was why I highlighted it, it's just something we're going to need to go back with them, because if we do sell. If we take cards or something for electric vehicle charging. It could just be an extra sentence that we put in there, not including electric vehicle charging stations or something, so yeah, I I highlighted that one. I had highlighted. Talks about. Regulations and there was a sentence in there, no provision or section of this ordinance, however. Shall prevent the town from exercising any other lawful authority or regular regulatory power. That may now or hereafter be possessed by the town, the big one, I think on on that one is. We require electricity and utilities to be underground, so. And pointing out that that's still the case, this is not changing anything with that. And then also just highlighting the the fee amount in here. But they said that it would be. Honor before, that they would submit the payment to us honor before the thirty-first day of March each year, beginning with twenty twenty-three. Guessing we'd need to amend that language because. For the twenty twenty-three payment, it will be based on them collecting three percent in twenty twenty-two. I mean, I'll gladly take a payment for five percent, but they won't collect it. Three percent for twenty twenty-two, so that's one I would assume they probably want to correct. So the payment of the new fee would start in the twenty twenty-four year.
You're in charge.
But it would go into effect as early as January of twenty twenty-three.
The only time.
So what's the timing to get this turned around for them?
There's more of timing for us, we've already gotten the draft ordinance, I mean, we just need to review it. Submit any changes, we'd want to see, do our legal review. If there's any negotiation or anything to undertake that, and then just take it through a couple readings. I do want to ask them too, because there is language in here about also having to do it with Dominion. Because they're the only provider in our area, I don't need if that, I don't know if that needs to be in our agreement or not. Because we have not spoken with anyone in Dominion. Nor if we had any reason to, because they have no service area in our town limits, so we need to clarify that with them as well. But some of the jurisdictions they work in have, you know, both utilities provide service within their boundaries.
The agreement itself is not exclusive.
That's correct.
So it turns out that in practice, they're the only provider.
Yeah, but there's language in the agreement that says that it doesn't take effect until it's agreed to also by Dominion. But Dominion doesn't service our area, so we just need to clarify that. But again, we won't have this on the agenda for two weeks, but I did just want to let you know. An update of kind of where we stood with that and that. I anticipate we'll be bringing a new franchise forward, probably in the next month or two. The only other thing I have, I I didn't put it on the agenda, we had spoken briefly with the mayor. We had originally looked at potentially doing this for for this upcoming budget year. I think for the time being, we'll we'll punt until the next budget year. So we're not going to debate or or discuss it at great length today, but. One of the things that I I think we may want to look at would be changing our fiscal year. For the budget, right now, we're on a calendar year, January one through December thirty-first. The state and county are both on the state's fiscal year, which is July one through June thirtieth. Just for the sake of of reporting and being on the same quarters and schedules and everything. Catherine and I have talked about it, we've talked with our auditor or. Our accountant. It just makes sense for us to consider moving to the state's fiscal year. The way we would do that is, and like I said, if we did it, we'd probably do it. To start in January of twenty twenty-four, so not this budget, but the next budget. The way we would do that is we would have one six-month fiscal year. So this time next year, we'd be adopting a budget for twenty twenty-four, but it would only be a six-month budget. And then a few months after that, we would adopt a new budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four slash twenty-five. Which would start July first, so it would get us same schedule as the state and as the county. It makes Catherine's life a thousand times easier, easier for reporting purposes, it would get us on. The same schedule for things like. Retirement rates change through the state public benefit authority. There's a whole long list of reasons why it would make sense, now there's a few things that we would also have to account for as well, so. One of them is. We want the utility commission to be on the same fiscal year because we get audited at the same time, so. That's a discussion we need to have with them, because they would also. You know, presumably you want to do a six-month fiscal year and then switch theirs as well, so. Those are conversations we haven't had at this point in time, but. I did just want to throw it out there, because to me, it it makes a whole lot of sense to do it. I would assume council probably doesn't care one way or the other. But it's always been. A little bit of a concern that. One, we're in our budget process in the middle of peak hurricane season. Two, that every other year we're in election season. You have the ability potentially of a lame duck council adopting a budget that. They're not going to be here, you know, in January for the new budget year. So, I mean, I I I just think there is a lot of reasons to consider switching. But if anyone has an objection, we'll just leave it the way it always has been, January one, but if if there's not an objection, I would like to. You know, over the next probably six months or so, kind of start. Putting a plan together for transitioning our budget for our fiscal year to July one. I'm guessing by the blank stares, no one really has any objection.
I really feel that you need to let people. Grapple with, you pointed out disadvantages to the current. Way we do things, and of course, that's the way it's been done, so everyone is already in the groove with that, so now. We're, we'll be making changes, but it's hard to, for me, it's hard to. foresee what the consequences of the changes would be in the way we go about what we do, so. I just think it's something. That you might want to issue a little summary for folks to have on hand.
Yeah, we'll certainly do that, you know, when we talked about it, we went through a list and and there's a lot of pros, but there's some cons too. And I think we need to put those on the table and discuss them as well. But yeah, i- if we do change it, you know, we're not just changing it, snapping our fingers, we have to. Amend our ordinance and, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to do to prepare for that change, so really, all all I was looking for today was. If council was open to changing it, and if so, we would bring it back with. You know, more details, more analysis and. You know, at that time, we will have had a discussion with the utility commission to. You know, see if that creates obstacles or challenges for them, but. You know, if council said no, just leave it the way it is, then we just drop it, not even spend any more time on it.
Well, you know, I don't favor rejecting something out of hand, but I think we need to have a opportunity to understand. To better understand the impacts of making the change.
Sure.
As I said. Not making a change just means we carry on the way things have been, and that doesn't take any effort at all.
Right. Yes, if you're open to at least considering it, we'll put all that information together.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. And that was all I had, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Joe, even if you want to talk about changing the fiscal year? Yes, there's no questions left. I will now gladly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor of adjourning the September twenty twenty-two work session, please signify your approval to adjourn by saying no.